To bring to order the zoning commission meeting, Beaver Creek Zoning Commission meeting for September the 2nd, 2021. We have a quorum to this evening, correct? And we are ready to have a roll call.
Mr. Axel?
Here.
Ms. Salter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
Mr. Reig?
Present.
Okay. Do any of the members, and we have a public hearing this evening, correct? Any of the members know on case 824 with regard to the application for Artisan Communities, any conflicts of interest?
No.
Okay, all right. So I said what's on the agenda here, anything else on the agenda besides the minutes from previous meetings, correct? So, I need a motion to accept the minute, or the agenda.
So moved.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, Mr. Axel?
Aye, yes.
Ms. Salter?
Yes.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
And Mr. Reig?
Aye.
Okay, would you like to go ahead and read the public hearing notice at this time?
Thank you. All right. The purpose of the hearing is so the commission may review and act on an application from Artisan Communities LLC with the approval of the property owners Kerwin Blue LLC and Kerwin Yellow LLC for approval of a specific site plan application for a residential subdivision. The proposed subdivision is to be located on a newly created 55.95 acre parcel within the Stonehill Village master plan community on the north side of Dayton-Zena Road, east of the intersection with Trayvine Road. The section of Stonehill Village has been approved by the township for residential development.
Okay, and that public hearing went out within the specified period of time?
Yes, it did.
Required, okay. I guess that means we're ready for any special sub-hearing time, okay, staff report?
Thank you. So, I have a bit of a longer staff report for you for this one. Start with the introduction, some facts here. The applicant in this case is Artisan Communities LLC. The applicant has submitted a site plan for approval pursuant to Article 17.07 of the Township Zoning Resolution. The site plan's for a community be known as the Courtyard, so that's kind of what we'll refer to it throughout the night, located within Stonehill Village PUD. The Courtyard's location is within Zone 2 of the PUD, and that allows for density of up to three to four dwelling units per acre per the zoning resolution which created the PUD, well, which amended the PUD most recently. The development will be situated on a 55.95 acre parcel with 162 proposed homes. This results in a calculated density of 2.89 units per acre, which is in that acceptable range of three to four. It's below it essentially. This, a new parcel is going to be created for this development. It'll combine parts of three different parcels that are listed here into a currently undetermined parcel number. It has not yet been created. It will be when the regional planning does their recording of the subdivision. The owners of said parcels have provided affidavits allowing Artisan Communities to apply for site plan approval on their behalf. Said parcels are identified for residential development in the Township's Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The site plan application meets the standards of completeness set forward in Article 17.07.5 of the zoning resolution as determined by staff. So now, a little bit of context. So, Artisan Communities and their civil engineer, Kimberly Horn, have been working very closely with staff since they first approached us, and they've been working very closely with Green County agencies to make sure that the site plan is driven by input from the community. So, multiple meetings have taken place. The plan has kind of evolved and now includes a second ingress and egress point. You all know how important that is, both to the township and to the subdivision regulations. Additionally, plans were altered to provide sufficient drainage capacity and ability to maintain that drainage infrastructure in the future, and we'll talk about that a little bit more detail later. Staff found that the applicant was collaborative and cooperative. It is really important to note that the site plan is not the final engineering phase for the development. When the trustees approve a site plan, development then has to go through the subdivision approval process with Green County Regional Planning. During that multi-phase process, various county agencies provide official recommendations which may necessitate changes to the site plan approved by the trustees. Site plans can be approved with conditions that require subdivision approval by Green County Regional Planning, which provides another layer of scrutiny to ensure that development occurs harmoniously. So, all that to really say, we approve 95% of the site plan, and then it is tweaked at regional planning to make sure that utilities go where they need to go, that roads are going to work with future planned roads and all those kind of things. So, it's just important to be aware of that as we go forward. So, I want to get into a couple of specific concerns that we like to address when we're talking about site plans. The first one is density in open space. So, the Courtyard's location, again, is within Zone 2 of the Stonehill PUD, allows for a density of up to three to four dwelling units per acre, and since we calculated the density earlier at 2.89 units per acre, it is within that acceptable density range. Of the 55.95 acres in the parcel, 27.41 will be devoted to lot space. The rest, 7.23 acres of right-of-way or road space, and 20.92 acres of common open space will count towards the open space when determining the percentage of open space allowable in the development. This results in only 48% of the development being devoted to lot space, roughly 13 devoted to right-of-way, and the other 39% being common open space. This is well above the limits within the Stonehill Village PUD resolution, which just states that at no time shall the common open space areas comprise less than 10% of the total aggregate acreage that has been approved for development within the PUD. The PUD is not nearly fully developed yet. There is no way that we are anywhere close right now to 90% not open space. Does that make sense? But even in this particular development, being at 48% lot space and 52% not lot space, we're very confident that this will not, not only will it work for this, but it will actually make further development within Stonehill PUD likely to conform with that 10% open space requirement as well. So, ingress egress and traffic is another big concern that we have when we talk about site plans. Developer and staff met with the Green County engineer Stephanie Goff and her traffic consultant, Paul Goodhue. During that meeting, the ingress egress for the development was reviewed, and the current site plan reflects those results. So, the right-in, right-out ingress egress point, its citation way that you'll see on the site plan is the direct result of compromises made by the developer to meet the county subdivision regulations. That used to be a cul-de-sac. Several options were considered, and this was actually the one favored by the county engineer. In considering the future stub streets to the north and east, which are Calumet Way and Walnut Hall Circle, provide future connectivity to planned residential developments. The meandering curved street configuration discourages the kind of cut-through traffic that people might worry about being located off of Trayvine Road, especially as future development occurs. I mean, right now, we're not worried about cutting through to anywhere, but as this area develops, that will be less of an issue with the kind of meandering roads that we have here. And the proposed walking and biking path which encircles the development will also reduce conflict between vehicular and pedestrian traffic. So, also talking about drainage and other infrastructure, that's especially important in this area. The development site requires significant drainage and retention infrastructure due to the natural topography of the area. Some of you might know driving by there, or some of you might live close by. So, three proposed wet basins, you'll see them on the site plan, and associated network of drainage pipes will work together to funnel the stormwater into the southwestern corner of the development where it will drain appropriately. In order to accommodate those pipes, two small common open spaces were requested by CD and our staff behind lots number eight, nine, and 124, 125, and 126. So, this was done to ensure that any future maintenance done on those stormpipes could be done safely according to OSHA regulations. Because the development's covenants prohibit any kind of deck or pool or anything that might go in a backyard, oh, I'm sorry, I missed a sentence there. So, as such, the rear yard setbacks in those specific lots are reduced to accommodate that open space. So, basically, all the rear yard setbacks are 30 feet, except in those lots, it's reduced, and that's to accommodate that open space. Again, because this development won't allow decks, pools, the kind of things that setbacks can often conflict with, we don't, we're happy with this compromise essentially. Traditional utilities like gas, water, sewer, and electric are each represented at the county subdivision approval process. They participate in the technical review commission and then also in the final approval stages. So, preliminary reviews by Green County sanitary engineering suggest that service for water and sewer will continue from the distribution lines that service neighboring developments, and staff is confident that all basic utility needs for your development will be met pending final subdivision approval. So, I'll move into our recommendations and conditions that we have. So, staff recommends approval for the proposed specific site plan. The applicant has worked together with staff to revise the site plan to redress our concerns over a couple of different iterations. We believe to the best of our knowledge that the site plan meets all criteria for approval outlined in Article 17.07.4 of the zoning resolution. Future engineering will be completed in conjunction with the Green County Regional Planning subdivision approval process, and staff recommends a series of conditions be placed on my approval of this site plan to ensure that the eventual development configuration promotes the health, safety, and welfare of current and future township residents. So, we have four conditions that we would like to submit for your consideration. So, number one, final approval is subject to the approval of the Green County Regional Planning and Coordinating Commission. The site plan's final engineering shall meet all Green County subdivision regulations. Number two, any modification to the proposed site plan resulting from final engineering during the county subdivision approval process shall be considered incidental modifications as outlined in Article 17.11.3 of the Township Zoning Resolution. Number three, the recorded site plan filed with Green County Regional Planning and Coordinating Commission, also known as the Record Plan, shall serve as the revised site plan in the event of any incidental modifications made due to changes requested during the county subdivision approval process, and for final approval is subject to approval by any agency or entity with review authority. I'd be glad to answer any questions about the staff report that we've given you, and then as we review the site plan, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have about that as well. Any questions about the staff report at this time?
Chair, I have a couple of questions.
Please do.
Sorry, I'm not familiar with y'all's process, so these questions are, do you guys conduct a traffic study to evaluate the use of Trayvine Road within a site plan or the overall puddle allotment?
We do not conduct a traffic survey.
Yeah. Have we asked the, I'm sorry, have we asked the proposer?
So, they've been using traffic data from a traffic survey conducted by Paul Goodhue, which is Green County's traffic advisor, Green County engineer's traffic advisor. Is that about a correct way to?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, a traffic study information has been used in creating this plan. It just wasn't done specifically for this development.
Yeah, okay. Interesting. Did that cover the whole?
Oh, sorry. Forgive me.
Yeah, if I could, I was, sorry, specifically to that, is that okay if I help answer, or is it out of turn?
I think it's out of turn at the moment, if it's okay. Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll revisit when they, when they, okay, understood. Thanks, Chair.
Uh-huh.
We'll get there.
I think that's, I think that's my only question. I, I'll, I can ask you, I don't really understand the Stonehill Village PUD resolution part on the effect of the overall area, on how that affects essentially the aggregated acreage part, but that's probably just me being a novice at here, so.
I can try and, if you have, you mean, how this particular site affects the overall acre, so essentially, you would look at the total number of acres in the PUD. I'd have to look in the document, but it's something like 14. Let me take a look while we're.
Yeah, I mean, I think I understand how you're calculating it. I'm wondering about the effect of this development upon, upon the overall numbers.
Right. So, because the, here's how we look at it. Because this is only 55.95 acres, which is a small percentage of the overall development, which is not yet fully completed, there's still a lot of open acreage left, and because the open space percentage is 52%, there is no possible way mathematically for it to have over 10, or less than 10% open space. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Just to kind of expand on that point too, only because I might be the only one that was here when all that was going on, Ed and I. The portions of the PUD that have been developed and approved thus far, I don't believe any of them are above the open space requirements already either. So, I think that so far, the PUD is well within the open space requirements of the entire PUD throughout each particular section that has been developed in pieces.
That's my understanding as well.
How long ago was that made?
The original PUD, Bobby, might have to, about 25 years ago.
Nineteen ninety-three.
But we revised it and updated it in 2016.
Correct.
And at that time, there was 1,252 acres and 420 of it was open space.
To give you an idea.
Yeah, that's all, thanks.
Okay. Mom, you have some questions?
You know what I'm.
I know what you're thinking, so I don't want to jump to it.
Again, we're going back to our last meeting on number four of the recommendations. I, it's just so open-ended with your conditions. I mean, is, is that really necessary to be in there?
Number four?
Yeah.
You know, it's the typical catch-all we put in. It would be, because they're not specifically mentioned, let's say, for instance, I don't know, EPA finds a delineated wetland, for instance. That would be why something like this catch-all is in there. Although, I would be comfortable with its removal, especially since regional planning does check for those kind of, they do check for delineated wetlands and things like that. It's just something that we've always included in these kind of approvals, so.
Yeah.
That condition lives whether we make it explicit or not. I mean, those.
Right, and that's why.
Those agencies have those authorities, whether we acknowledge it tonight in writing or not, that doesn't, that doesn't change. We just believe as a staff that it's best for all of that to be out and on the table during public hearings like this, especially when the public actually attends these hearings, and we don't have that tonight. But when we do, it's good for them to know that there are other authorities and other considerations.
Right.
That will come into play before dirt is actually moved on the site.
Okay, I mean, I understand, and the way it's worded compared to the last one, I'm okay with that, I guess, since they already, you're stating that they have review authority. I'm not against anybody that has review authority. I'm against what the other one was, so I'm okay with that.
Okay. I have a question about the incidental modifications in 17.11.3. So, can we just kind of review what some of those could be in relation to this particular?
Yeah. Let me go to that third section for you. We went 24, Matt. Oh. Sorry, what do you?
Eleven, three.
Thank you. Okay, so, incidental modifications are defined as modifications which do not change the PUD's permitted uses, okay? So, and any that would not exceed the conditions of its approval resolution. So, those are the two big ones. Those would be, we would still hold them to that standard.
Correct.
So, anything that would, and I don't, I can't imagine something in regional planning that would change the use of the PUD or the site plan. But if we put any limitations on it now as a condition, say, I don't know, you know, open space limitation on it right now, and any changes were made at regional planning that exceeded that open space limitation, it can no longer be considered an incidental modification. Does that make sense? So, that would be one of your major stopping points for us to say, this can't be an incidental modification. But, that gives you a large list of less building coverage, okay, due to a decrease in the size of structures, a decrease in the number of structures, decrease in the number of dwelling units, a minor redesign of streets, such as adjustment in turning radius, minor redesign of pedestrian facilities or parking lot loading areas. This is, these are more minor redesigns. But the purpose of incidental modifications is that we can, as a staff, approve them without bringing them to the zoning commission, because they are of minor character, or I should say incidental character, and because they do not meet those two top conditions, they don't change the use, they don't exceed any limitations already placed on it. And that's what we'd be looking at with anything that the regional planning came forward with. But as we talked about in our last meeting, there are a number of changes that they would have the developer make, like, hey, you need to move this pipe, you know, three feet south, and, or, hey, we want to see this hydrant move 50 feet to the right. Those are the kind of things that, again, our office does not believe the applicant should be forced to come back and be submitted to a zoning commission hearing for, and possibly a trustee's hearing for, so.
So, it's really about improving collaboration and efficiency?
It is. We also think that our process in which we have all these pre-meetings and work with the engineer and regional planning beforehand before bringing that to you, means that a lot of the modifications will be incidental anyways, that there shouldn't be any major changes by the time it gets to regional planning, that it really is just utility tweaks, and, you know, maybe, like, soil and water will look at it and say, hey, I want this graded a little bit differently, and that shifts the pattern just slightly of a couple lots. So, those are the kind of things we think, if experts are telling us this needs to happen for this reason, we should trust that their expertise is why we submit to regional planning in the first place.
You have questions?
In other words, there's, there's still potential for minor modifications and major modifications.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, if they come back and request a change that is not due to regional planning, then they would have to submit to any of the incidental minor or major modification standards that we would normally place. This would only be if regional planning, and there's a, there's a document that regional planning will release as part of the full commission, that's the resolution of approval, or there's technical review comments that they'll release. So, they would have to essentially submit to us some sort of record of, regional planning says we need to do this, and that would give us something that we could put in the case file, and then, again, we, we try to say, the Record Plan would then serve as that revised site plan if any incidental modifications took place this way. So, we tried to, from, you know, from start to finish, figure out how to administer this as well, so.
This is one of the first times I've seen that. That's why I was asking about it.
It is.
We did talk, we'd be coming forth, but I just wanted to clarify that that's the spirit of it, that's the purpose of it, and that's that. Do you have any specific questions at this point that haven't been asked that you want to know about?
Not on the staff report. I mean, it was like the preliminary work outlined here is.
Okay. I think we're ready to hear from the applicant.
Right. So, whoever wants to speak, I would recommend you come up here, there's a microphone. Can you bring these images up for you if you want them?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Seth Barrett. I'm a partner with Artisan Communities and here with my partner Dan Arborstirken. And we are builder partners with Epcun Communities. If you're familiar with Epcun Communities, they are based in Dublin, Ohio. Steve Peck is joining us here as well. He, we work together closely. He's the development representative of Epcun Communities. And then, if I can introduce the rest of our team, we have Mike Graves and Todd Hoopman with Kimberly Horn, our civil engineers. So, we appreciate your time this evening, considering the site plan for approval today. And as we, as we entered the market and came to the Dayton area and looked at Beaver Creek, we found Stonehill Village, and we're very excited by what had already taken place at Stonehill, the neighborhood and the community there. Obviously, had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Nutter and both Bob and Mary, and have had a great collaboration with them as we've discussed moving forward with this project. And so, we're really excited to present this opportunity and the site plan to the township, and I think it'll be a great, a great addition to both Stonehill Village as an immediate neighborhood, as well as the larger communities. So, what you see on the screen right now is our rendering of the site plan that has been discussed and circulated as part of the application in the staff report. Trayvine is located on the left-hand side of the image. Stoneberry Court, or a to-be-named extension of Stoneberry Court, which is the extension from the Claiborne neighborhood across on the west side of Trayvine, is what you see kind of in that upper corner, and that would provide the primary access into the community. This, this site plan, as Max indicated, represents 162 home sites. We would develop this in multiple phases. The initial phase would be 30 home sites, and that is kind of comprised in the upper left-hand corner to the north of the larger wet basin around the main country. We will have our own homeowners association and dedicated community amenities. So, each community that's developed, and in this case, you see kind of in the center of the screen, the clubhouse for the residents. Other amenities that would be part of that clubhouse would be a pickleball court, bocce ball, there's a community garden for gardening, obviously pool for the seasonal use. And so, obviously, Stonehill Village currently has an amenity package for the residents, but as part of our community, we would be providing that, that would be, you know, dedicated for the residents of the courtyards. So, that's, that's one thing that's important to note. Obviously, in the design and the layout that we've worked collaboratively with, both with staff as well as with Mr. Nutter, you know, it was important to continue the connectivity of the trails and the greenway, those amenities that already exist that residents of Stonehill Village, and how our development as, you know, as it's, it's being developed there can connect both the north and the south. GA White is to the north with white marked trails, Steeplechase, Spindletop, and how all of that development moves southward through our community. So, in the, in the larger site plan, you'll see that those, that trail network has been dedicated and thought through, so there are points of connection for the future development, either to the south or to the north of us as well, since we're kind of starting kind of in the middle of vacant ground at this point, our greenland. Max, would you like to show maybe the original aerial first? I might just assume. I might just, assuming you're familiar, but I thought just starting with that original aerial map just to kind of indicate the site, uh, the existing structures that are there, um, and then, um, Stone Hill that would extend across Claiborne, uh, but just to give you an image of that if you're not familiar from a, uh, from that perspective, um, can you go over to the site? One, and, uh, maybe page two.
Sure.
Oh, that's on there. Uh, he, he could go up one to pa- I'm sorry, page one there, sorry. So, clear that. The, if you can see, there's a, the upper right-hand, if I can.
Yeah, sure.
I'll just go over and point, or do you have a?
Uh, I don't believe we have a laser.
Okay, I'll just point, I think it might be a little easier. The phasing that I had mentioned, the original or the initial thirty homes are basically in this quadrant here. So there's a light dash line and you can see that in your package there that kind of indicates that initial phase. And then we would develop, uh, moving eastward basically. Uh, the last phase would be basically the far east up against the existing power line easement, uh, in that area. Just to give you a sense of sequencing that we're currently contemplating, um, from the development perspective. And, um, I think that's, that's probably it. Once again, really appreciate your time today in considering our application and, uh, have, um, had a great collaborative experience so far working with staff and, uh, with, uh, with the Nutter family, so, thank you.
Thank you. Do any of you have any questions you'd like to ask the applicant?
I may go first.
Sure, you may.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to hear about the traffic.
Sure, sure, sure.
And I'll.
Yeah, okay, so I can go up there?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm Mike Graves, I'm a civil engineer at Kim Lee Horn. Uh, so we actually have performed a traffic study, traffic impact study specifically for this development. Uh, we updated traffic counts, um, so we, we were actually out in the field about three weeks ago, updating traffic counts on Trayvine Road. And the traffic study is currently, um, at the Green County Engineers Office for review. So any, any, uh, additional improvements that were needed to Trayvine Road, so just turn lanes into the extension of Stoneberry Court will be formalized, uh, with the county engineer's office through this traffic impact study.
Okay, that would've been good to know. Staff, I mean, is there a way we can, uh, we don't know the outcome of said study, do we?
No, um, I think you just indicated that it's currently being reviewed, is that right?
Yes.
So, um, at that time when we had, uh, Green County Engineers' review, we could try to give you the exact results of that traffic study. We're going off of the meetings we had with the Green County Engineer and her traffic consultant, which led to this, uh, configuration with the right-in, right-out egress, as why we're as staff confident that future information will let us show that traffic will not be a, a problem, that ingress, egress, or traffic counts will not be an issue for this development.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I, as a guy that, I, not here, but I've done this before, where we have a development that's going to be the first of many. I, I've had this problem before where we didn't plan right the first time and by the third time we were in a big turtle because we gave the first guy a kind of a freebie. Um, and I'm not saying that's what's going on here, I'm just saying, um, without the, without the traffic study and with the size of this pub, that's why I was asking some of those questions earlier. You know, I don't know what the impact of the study is here and it's probably done because he's paid to just do it on this area, right? And I don't know if Green County's taking in the entire pub, uh, when they evaluate the s- the numbers that he comes out with with the traffic study. But you, yeah, no, no, it's okay, go ahead, I mean, you're, you're the expert.
Mike, can you comment on the original, the base, baseline traffic study that was done, the previous?
Right. So.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I wanted to kind of, it was my understanding that this site plan was built on an existing traffic count and study that was done in the possession of the Green County Engineers Office and that you guys are updating it, is that correct?
Yes.
So not a brand-new traffic study?
Yeah, but what was the date of the original study?
January of this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it was, yeah, I'm, it was late January of twenty-one.
Was it the one done for?
That was the one that we've done for the corner, uh, commercial space, and believe me, it was studied to death.
Okay, okay, I'll take your word for it. Um, okay, finance you for much of that, okay.
And our, our, the results of our study, the recommendation is for, um, a, a southbound left turn lane into the future extension, and for.
A southbound left turn lane?
Uh, so the very top left, so southbound left.
Oh, southbound left, okay.
Yep, and then, uh, what we will be working through, and this is, this was kind of the impetus for us updating it, is the original traffic study from earlier this year that everyone's referencing did not have, um, an additional, the right-in, right-out, so that was kind of the change. Uh, and so, uh, they're looking at, uh, where our northbound right turn lane will fall. So that's kind of the, the last piece, we'll probably, most likely have a northbound right turn lane, um, and.
On both points of entry?
Uh, it's most likely at this point only going to be the southern point of entry because anyone coming north from Dayton Xenia Road entering our development is most likely going to turn in at that, that right-in, right-out. Um, and, and that, that, these one hundred and sixty-two lots will, that's, that's where the impact will fall. That's, that, that's the.
I mean, if that's mine, has the lane, that's probably what they're going to use.
Yes, and so that's, um, but like I said, that, that is going through the final review with the county engineer's office.
So how does that work here? Do, does the, does this, does the township pick up, or does the develop, does the applicant pick up the bill for the turn lane?
Uh, so that would be something that would be billed by the applicant, yeah.
But that's not in said proposal, right?
Sorry?
That, the suggested, the suggested changes to the addition to the left turn lane and the addition to the right turn lane, are those in here?
I believe that they are, yeah, they're right here and then.
Yeah, they're shown right there. I'll see the right one, I see that one.
And then this is the, sorry, this is the right-in, right-out lane here. You got the island right here.
Oh, yeah, I do see that, okay.
Right turn in, right turn out.
So how far is it from, I guess it would be the north, the citation way up to or down to the intersection at Dayton Xenia and Trayvine, do you know?
I don't, I don't recall.
That's a good affair, Pete.
It's a good, well, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, half hour, six hours.
Is that, yeah, from here to here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about. I'm thinking about the speed that's going from here to there, so, um, being able to, there are a lot of traffic accidents at that corner, is what I'm getting at. Mr. Nutter, do you know if the majority of those accidents?
You're gonna have to speak louder, I can't read you too much.
I'm sorry, I know, okay. Do you know if the majority of the accidents that are happening there are happening coming off the highway and up, turning left, turning right, coming down? Do you know what's happening there, the cost of the accidents?
Yes, all of the above. It's, it's the worst debacle the county engineer has and refuses to do anything about. So I begged her to put a traffic light there where the other county engineer took it out and I've asked her how many people need to get killed and maimed and that we should put a care flight, uh, landing spot right there because it's a terrible intersection and needs to be fixed. And for some reason she just wants to keep studying. I wish I had that reason and she doesn't like me to bring it up.
Well, here is a time that we can talk about it a little bit, I think. What is the potential, we have crystal ball, guys. What, what is the potential for that issue increasing as a result of this development?
Well, having spent, uh, Saturday morning at the new firehouse, I doubt very much.
I saw that too.
Yeah, so it.
From a distance?
But what I'm getting at is the, the background traffic of Trayvine is, is the problem. It is not, uh, what we're contributing here.
So you don't see a difference as a result of this?
Do I what?
Do you anticipate a difference either way as a result of this?
Do I specifically what? I'm sorry.
All right.
I said, where am I hearing it?
Do you anticipate a difference in, in the accident outcomes as a result of what's hap- as this develop, of this development?
I would say not. Uh, I would say the majority of the traffic that happens at, at that intersection is, is through traffic and, uh, you know, I've, I've lived on Trayvine most of my life. And right, right now, you know, what they need is a, is a signalization down at the corner so that we can slow traffic down and, uh, and allow some gaps. She's interested in, uh, she, the county engineer, wants to put roundabouts everywhere, which will slow the traffic down, but it will not provide gaps. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not the traffic expert.
That's okay, I'm looking for an opportunity to facilitate a solution to the problem. That's what I'm trying to find here.
If I continue talking, I just get myself in trouble.
So, and I, and that, that's.
I sound like Biden, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So, sure, can I ask?
Yes, please.
So can you, I understand that, you know, we can't take your, your word as official, but what, what were the, what were the, what were the counts estimated from the outcome of said development once it's finalized in full phase in regards to the current traffic? You know, you, you have, I've, I've seen those studies, you have to put the numbers of current, you have to do a whole thing. Well, what was said outcome?
Uh, I mean, the, the outcome was for the turn lanes that, uh.
Yeah, but I mean in the counts.
I, I don't know, I, one of, our, our traffic engineer within our office did those counts and I'm, I'm the site drainage guy, so.
Oh, let's talk about pervy's paper, okay, just kidding.
Well.
This, this was more of a turn lane study than a full-fledged traffic study because that's, that's the important thing at, at this area and, and, in my humble opinion.
Understood.
Okay, so you brought up site and drainage, I think we're talking about asphalt with that. But the question that I have then is the distance from the east point to the Little Miami River. Do we know how far that distance is, the topography of that? And I know that sanitary engineering or somebody took a look at that, but is there anything that we need to be responsible about when it comes to drainage?
You're talking about water?
Water.
I've had that entire four hundred acres, starting at the Little Miami River, going to the furthest northern part of our farm delineated in the past eighteen months.
Yes.
By studies and submitted to the EPA. And there are no, first of all, there is no issues at this particular area.
Okay.
And, uh, quite frankly, uh, with the retention basins that they have, uh, that will actually reduce the flow versus, uh, uh, where it is today.
Okay.
Throw crop ground has more flow than our housing development generally.
Okay.
So to answer your first question about the distance, we're gonna just do the G I S estimate here.
Sure.
Okay.
And as the crows fly.
That's Little Creek.
Crows fly.
And you said you want Little Miami, is that correct?
Yeah. You don't have it, water go across hilltop? That's not, I don't know that, that you closed that road because of high water or anything, do you think that happened?
Yeah, a little over a mile is the distance, about fifty-eight hundred feet.
Okay. And it, I'm assuming it flows down? Is there any times that that hilltop's closed because of water flooding?
I would have to, I mean, having been here a year and a half, I would have to get to him, you might want to ask.
I never traveled, so it's never impeded my travel.
Ha- has hilltop, and to your knowledge, ever flooded in that, in that area? Due to?
Well, if it does, it, it has nothing to do with this.
Okay.
Because the water flows downhill and that's the high side.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get at, okay.
Uh, but, yes, I mean, uh, we've had, uh, hilltop closed a couple times in the last twelve months. And, uh, since, again, my barns are right next to it, so I, I get to see it a lot.
Okay.
It's the most peaceful time I have.
And you look like you are burning to say something. What's on your mind?
I just wanted to say that I'm aware that, that, the, the Office of Scenic Rivers at the Ohio Department of Natural Resources is aware of this development and has, uh, looked at, because the Ludlow Creek, which flows into the Little Miami at the closest point to this development, is within a few thousand feet of the Little Miami, a national scenic river. The scenic rivers program staff was brought in to, to weigh in on recommendations that they would make for development within that area that's close. And their recommendations turned out to be boilerplate, the things we would all expect. Um, silt fencing during construction, sediment control, um, the, the, the detention ponds and so forth. I, Bob is absolutely correct in saying that the detention that's going to be provided on this, in this particular site, will actually reduce the flow into the river, um, and slow it down, both. And so, um, my attitude at this point is that if scenic rivers program is okay with it, then I don't have the expertise to appeal otherwise.
Okay.
All, all of the water here would flow under Trayvine Road.
Right.
And, and go through the commercial site that we are also developing. So, so all of that water will be caught once again. And a lot of that is, is more for filtration than it is for volume.
Okay, okay.
Right, the EPA in recent years has, is revising their regulations about drainage and importantly, what's been added is a consideration for water quality that wasn't there before. Previously, we were only concerned about how much water and how fast it gets into the river. Now we have to be concerned with quality of that water and that has to do with time, giving, giving water time to settle when there's turbulence, which happens more frequently than it used to. Forgive me, I had brain surgery six weeks ago and my speech is still, um, a little slurred, so I apologize, but.
I think you sound great.
It's, it's, um, especially bad when I get excited. And I get excited about the river, I love the river. But this, this development is being carried out with utmost respect for the river and what it means to have a scenic river flowing through Beaver Creek Township. So I'm really, I'm really pleased with the way that local officialdom has stepped up in recent years in the last two or three years to, to protect that resource.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. Do you have questions?
Uh, yeah, so maybe I missed it, but Stoneberry Court looks like a stub street at this point as well, right? And the rendering, I think I saw kind of going off to the northeast. Um, I assume that's the intention eventually to extend that, right?
Right.
Is there any concerns, and we may not have the experts in the room to indicate, but having a stub street right off a mid-thoroughfare like that? Like if that's going to be the main point of entry coming south? Is there any concerns of traffic congestion kind of weaving its way into the neighborhood that way?
We didn't see any of that concern from Stephanie or Paul when we met with them. Um, especially, we were presented with what amounted to a, a theoretical expansion of the neighborhoods to the north. We're really, i- it makes us more comfortable that the same person who's developing this site and owns this site also owns and will develop the site to the north. So we know there's going to be some collaboration there. Um, we also are very confident that the road will be continued in the near future. There's the, the development actually farther to the north here, white barn trails. And actually the s- uh, section three, the site plan just got recorded. There's a stub street down to the south here. Um, I can't show you it, but, uh, it's just recorded at regional planning. So we know that there's going to be connectivity here as well. So based on that, we're confident that the stub street or, you know, um, uh, Stoneberry, essentially the continuation of it, will eventually connect this to this. And it was even stated by the developer, um, that, uh, there, this could not even. And it was even stated by the developer that there, this could not even get built until util, certain utilities were connected up through that stub street, through this development down to the south.
Well, somewhere.
So, all those things taken together suggest that that will not remain a stub street for that long. And none of those concerns were brought up by Stephanie or Paul, so staff is not concerned with that.
I'm sorry, can I ask?
Absolutely.
So, I'm sorry, when you say the same developer, you mean, AppCon, the same group, the same-
Uh, Bob Nutter.
Okay, so the owner of the, okay.
Yeah, the owner of the PUD, I should say.
Yeah, okay, alright.
You bring up a good question.
That's not the same.
Yeah, well, a lot of the times, yeah, words, those words are thrown around interchangeably. Let me, let me try that again.
Okay.
The owner of this PUD, who works very closely with the people who purchase those sites and then develop them, very closely, is going to be involved with the development of the site to the north. And so, based on that, we're comfortable, that, and also the required connection here in Section 3 of White Barn Trails, that this stub street will not remain a stub street for, for very long.
So, you brought up a good point, and that was one question I was going to ask. You guys are in Phase 1 of something, or Phase 1 is, you're moving across that eastern portion of the same PUD, or the same neighborhood that we're talking about, right?
Correct.
We're not talking about, you've got plans for a Phase 2 above that to connect those.
That's correct. The multiple phases that I referenced were within the site plan-
Within the site plan.
-not to the land to the north of the sub, correct.
Alright, okay. Any more questions of the applicant here? Yep, okay. So, I'm looking around the room here. I'm supposed to open the public portion of the hearing. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to speak? I don't think we need to open a public portion then, do we?
I would open it still and close it still, just for purposes of, that there was an open-
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open the public portion of the hearing. Is there anyone here for the applicant that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant? Anyone here against the applicant? Or the application, I should say? Anyone neither for nor against the application? Just having general comments. Hearing none, I close the public portion of the meeting. Okay, now we have discussion among our zoning commission with regard to the application that's been set forth as well as the conditions.
I don't have any concerns as outlined by the staff report.
I'm, I'm good.
Are you thinking about traffic studies?
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna, I know, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna uphold the movement that these guys are need, but I certainly would like to see, I certainly would like to see the outcome of the traffic study, and then I'm wondering, I mean, I think with all these, these modification and amendment items as listed 1 through 4, I think back stock's pretty clear that if there's an issue, we can re-attack it, but I would like to see that stuff. And then, you know, I, I have to agree with that little, I know, I don't like kicking the, kicking the rock, right? So, with that stubout street, right, we're just gonna kick the rock to the next developer, and then the next developer, and I'm not sure that's a solution. That's more like a, that's more like a hope, right? Hope's not a strategy. So, someone's gotta do it, and so I just, you know, the answer is it's gonna cross half of thi, half of this applicant's, you know, subdivision, whatever you wanna call it, but they're only putting in a tiny section of it. It seems like we're kinda kicking the can to the next guy to really continue it, and he's gonna have to pick up the bill for a major section of road. So, I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure how to overcome that here, you know, at the, at the final approval. But, I, you know, other than that, I don't have a, I don't, I don't wanna uphold the movement, if that makes sense, Chair.
Well, so, there is this 17.07.12, item number 6, that talks about the proposed streets and driveways. It's on page 116, if you have your book. That's okay, that's all right.
I don't, I don't get any of that.
You never, you never know. But that, that particular one is something we could hang our hat on, but I, I think that we've talked about what the bigger problem is, and you're right, it will, it will continue to ripple.
Right.
I saw Ed wanting to say something, and I would like to hear what he has to say. Go ahead, what?
I'll let Ed go.
I'm just thinking maybe a little context would be useful to helping figure this out. First of all, the issue of traffic, especially on Trayvine Road, is a major issue for the township as well as for all of Green County. It's a major thoroughfare within Green County and will become more so. So, planning for anything along Trayvine Road is by definition long-range planning. And the entrance of the new county engineer, new less than three years, means that the conversation took a whole new turn when the development directly across the street in South Clayborne Greens was proposed. And Bob is right, when I chuckled when he said it's been studied to death, because in fact, it has. We went round and round and round and round on protecting, issues of protecting public safety along both Trayvine Road and Dayton-Zenia Road, which intersect here. I think there's general acknowledgement that, that that intersection between Dayton-Zenia and Trayvine is a cluster. That's when Mr. Nutter comes in handy, doesn't it? And, and I think that though it has caused delays in moving forward with some of the newer subdivisions, shall we say, in Stonehill Village, it's really gonna pay off for the long-range future. For more than 25 years, the widening of Trayvine Road has been lodged in the long-range plans at Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. For Trayvine to become a three-lane road from 35 to 235, all the way through Fairborn and out the other side. That doesn't happen just because we want it to. It happens because we require that as things accumulate along Trayvine Road, we plan for the additional traffic, and we plan for the need for wider rights of way, which Mr. Nutter has granted over the years. Trayvine is, for most of its length now, wide enough for us to accommodate the future plans for it and future traffic needs because we planned and because we had the cooperation of a responsible property owner here. With specific reference to the connection across a vacant parcel between this development and the White Barn Trails development to the north, the connection is required, not just of whoever comes in to develop that property, it's required the people working on both the north and south end to make provisions for that connection. And so, they won't get Section 3 approved unless it can connect. We're not gonna try to force them to build the connection of 2,000 or 3,000 feet of roadway that they have no interest in and cannot benefit from at all. But we can require that they not do anything to throw impediments in the future construction of that roadway. And when someone comes in with a plan for that 70 or 80 acres, whatever it is, they will be required to make that connection. The approvals contain those conditions already. The approval for White Barn Trails and this approval make those connections possible. I think that's all we can do. I don't think we can require the current owner to build a road in the middle of a cornfield.
That's what, yeah, I'm not too-
But we're doing everything we can to make sure that, and this frankly originated in a discussion about access points. You'll notice that about four years ago, the township began requiring, and we've become stricter and stricter and stricter over it, new policy. Once you, once you have more than 30 homes in a, 30 parcels in a development, you've gotta have two bona fide public roadway entrances and exits. You can't get by with emergency access points anymore. We will no longer approve those in Beaver Creek Township. No more emergency access, access roads, such as exist to rip across the street in Clayborne Greens. Clayborne was the last one that will approve willing. We've had our arms twisted since, but Clayborne's the last one that we will approve willingly. And so, what that means is that there have to be internal connections between and among all the different developments, and that's what we're, what we're working hard to ensure happens in the remainder of Stonehill Village that's not developed. So, I just want to assure everybody that this is not something that's, that we're not paying attention to. It hasn't escaped our notice that this will be, these will be issues. Frankly, those internal connections will take some of the pressure off Trayvine Road. Traffic's going north and south within the subdivisions. It's gonna be going slower, it's, it's gonna be, there's gonna be less of it, there's gonna be space. It may take some of the future pressure off Trayvine Road itself. But because Trayvine and Dayton-Zenia are both rights of way that belong to the county and not to the township, the county engineer ultimately has final approval over what we allow by way of access to and from both Trayvine and Dayton-Zenia. Bob, would you like to add anything to that? It's just-
Just briefly.
That it's a long, it's a long story, and we, it's a battle we've been fighting for a long time. And we're, I just want you to know, we're on the 10.
We, we foresaw this in 1985. And that's why we said that we would allocate 120-foot right-of-way, the full length of our property. I can't help what happens to the north, obviously. But that, that goes from the intersection of Dayton-Zenia Road to just south of the Tamara Trail. And I saw what was going on on North Fairfield Road at the time, and I swore that we'd never have something that we paved up to people's doorsteps. And I knew that it was going to take a minimum of three lanes, and maybe, you know, some of the extra could be used for some trees, something that was, believe it or not, trees do slow down traffic, not because they're in the way, but because it gives people a calming effect. And right now, Trayvine Road is a raceway. I grew up with a raceway, so I understand that very well. So, what, the road that they're talking about going to the north, we mandated that road in 1993, when we developed our PUD. All of the major roads within Stonehill are mandated, and they were mandated well before government got involved. And I have a 158-page traffic study here that is in the possession of Green County Planning and the Green County Engineer, and has been for almost a half a year. We've gone so far, as part of the additional things put upon us was to go from Route 35 and the first intersection that goes east towards Xenia. And so, all of that has been taken into consideration. We've actually had people go out there and individually count cars turning left and turning right. So, it's not just a cord in the road that gives you an automatic count, we know where they came from. So, you do that for a few hours, and then you make some projections. But all of that is, is part of the traffic impact study. And it was the most thorough and frustrating impact study I've ever been a part of. And we did traffic studies in the 90s for this. So, I can safely say that probably 80% or more of the traffic on Trayvine Road is through traffic and not created by Stonehill Village. I'd be happy to answer any other questions, I don't know what I can answer.
Are there a certain number of houses, of density right in, down that road that have to be met before there's gonna be dollars put into a solution? Do you know that?
I, I know that it's up to the county engineer. It's a county road, the township doesn't control it. We have made recommendations to even the previous county engineer. And so, until they decide to go with the newest FAD, which is the roundabouts, or put some conventional signalization in, it's claimed to be an issue.
Right, okay.
They need that in the worst way. All you need to do is stand by Trayvine Road and watch it on any morning or any afternoon. But I think that, I think there's enough data to make good, sound, engineered decisions. And now, the decisions have to be made.
And is there anything for this particular, I think you guys would've told me in a condition, but if there was something that we can do at this point, at this junction, to facilitate resolution for that, we want to do it.
I don't, I don't know what you can do.
I don't know what it is, okay.
And it is not a matter of kicking the can down the road.
Okay.
It's simply a case of, of, you know, the county's priorities. So, now they've come along and said, "Well, we're gonna build a bikeway." Well, of course, it's not enough money to do it, but we're gonna build a bikeway and we're gonna take other peoples to the north their right-of-way. Stonehill's provided the right-of-way for that bikeway. But everybody else, their property will have to be ripped from there, in whatever manner they decide to do that. But it needs to be improved. There needs to be a minimum of three lanes. And quite frankly, to say that that's our problem at Stonehill is terribly false, because, you know, we've, we've pointed it out for the last 30 years. And most of that traffic that flows by our driveways doesn't come from Stonehill. It's what we used to call base traffic. I'll be happy to talk anytime you all want to talk about it.
And just one other, these, I'm sure I'm correcting this, but these are all single-family homes in this development?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just to add to that, Ian, when we keep talking about this study that was done in January, that if you recall, there was a site plan for that commercial development-
Yes.
-to the south part of that, which included an addition of a road which was gonna connect to Trayvine and Dayton-Zenia. And so, because of that, that's why there was so much significant study being done, because of that addition there. So, I was just kinda reminding you guys, that's why there's been so much focus already in that area, which is very close to this, on those traffic studies.
I, I do recall. And so, our novice here has some reasonable questions and concerns, and so, after having listened to Ed and to Mr. Nutter, do you have any other thoughts based on the experiences that you've had in zoning?
Yeah, I mean, my, my issue with the stubout street isn't the fact that I'm worried about it connecting to the north inevitably. I, I have no question that you guys are, and it sounds like Mr. Nutter's a very welcoming landowner. But my concern is, is that I would hate to have, I would hate to be the next developer to come in and be stuck with one little tiny street and have me be the new developer to have to extend it across the current applicant's entire easterly northern border, right? To run that street from that Trayvine all the way east to have it then cut up and have the new applicant, the next applicant, pay for that whole road. That seems like an unfair burden on the next guy. And that's an expensive thing, so I would hate for them to- cut back on some, I mean, it's all a money game. So they would most likely have to cut back on something, we wouldn't know what, to then fund that road to go easterly when, when the current applicant isn't really providing much of that road.
Well, I mean, I'd also argue, though, that whoever's gonna develop it just to the north is gonna have to do two ingress and egress anyway.
Sure.
So, part of it's already started.
No, sure, yeah, that's fair, but, but at the same time, I would hate to, I would hate to make them complete that road all the way across. That, I would think there's
Well, they're the only ones that are gonna benefit from completing that road.
No, I, I would argue, no, because there's the stubout road at Calumet Way. I would argue that that
Yeah, but if they run it on the north side, they're running it to the back end of their lots, which you're making them pay for a road that they're not gonna use, that the next developer's gonna use.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm not suggesting that the applicant have to run the, have to run Stoneberry Court all the way east. But I, I would think that when and if the developer to the north comes in and there has to be some connective tissue there, that the current applicant should be on the hook to at least provide some sort of funding measure, whatever you wanna call it, to assist in the road if it's gonna be a shared road between the developments. I mean, I don't think that's a major ask.
Can I clarify one?
Sure.
Let me, let me say this, sir. That, that street's gonna be loaded with houses.
What, what street?
The Connectivity Street will be, that developer will load that street. It'll, it'll have houses on both sides. So in essence, if we're, if we are required to do that, we're gonna be paying for part of his road that he's gonna be benefiting from. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, is probably, and Bob can speak to this, because they're, they're already talking to some other builders who are interested in that site. It's not gonna be a boulevard where it's not loaded with houses.
One second, I think it's important to get some orientation here before, and I agree with your comments, but the discussion again to date is that this road would eventually turn north to White Barn Trails. This road is not intended at this point, at least in our discussions to date, to be connected with Calumet Way. So it's really, where Dan was going with that explanation was, it turns north through the middle of the development, it connects to White Barn Trails. And then at that point, it's basically loaded by the future applicant or future developer for their benefits. So that
Okay.
If that arrives, that'll clarify.
Just, just one comment to that. That really is my responsibility. Because it's up to me to find somebody that's willing to do that. And so I do appreciate you considering that. And that, but, but all of that will depend on, on me to find the right person that wishes to develop that in a responsible manner.
Yeah, I understand. Now that, that's
And that road to the north, on the east side of this, will also go to connect. And eventually, that might connect to the far north through the field that we have on the eastern side of Liberty Hill Woods, if you know where I'm talking about.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not, no, no, but that, that's a fair foot. I mean, if it does turn and go north, then that, that's a very fair foot. I, I would, okay.
But, and we're, one of the keys of this is we're putting, running the sewer connection to the east, and then that sewer connection has to go to White Barn Trail. And so it will follow a predetermined path that we've already, we determined quite frankly in nineteen ninety-three.
And Bob has required us to size the sewer through our property to accommodate the development to the north, and that will be our responsibility.
So, but I do appreciate you concerning
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to throw any wrenches, but if, if that does hook north, right, I mean, the next developer is gonna try to, I mean, the whole point that that, that northerly road is then gonna reduce traffic on Traybine, I would probably argue, it's become such a windy residential thing that it probably end up won't if each developer does essentially their own thing, right? But, but that, you know, the future's hard to say, right?
The future, no, well, the future developer will do what you all input and what I input.
Sure.
And, and, you know, somewhere in between, we're gonna arrive at a price per acre.
That's right.
And so, if it's, if it's really bad, I won't get much. So you can be, you can rest assured on that.
I feel you do just fine, Mr. Nutter. Okay, that's fair. All right, chair, I'll, I'll shut up now. I'm good.
You have any others? Cause we, this is wonderful discussion, so.
We do appreciate it. We really do appreciate it.
It is, no, it is a very well-respected discussion, so.
It's all good.
All right. So, I looked down the rest of this list. Do we need to say them one out loud, just to, to make sure we're good with them?
No, I don't think we need to say them.
Okay, just double-checking. We've, we've done it before. So, I looked over them and I felt comfortable. Have you looked over the site plan requirements? And I so apologize, I don't even know your name.
Foster, Foster.
Foster, Mr. Foster.
No, no, Foster's my first name.
Foster's your first name?
Yes, ma'am.
That's wonderful, thank you so much.
No problem.
Did you want to take a peek at these conditions there, just, just so you know what those criteria are? We'll give him a minute to look at those.
I can too.
Any other discussion while he's looking over those, you guys, thoughts?
So, I included what was sent to you guys, the criteria for SSP approval in the packet that you guys saw, is what they're talking about.
This looks all pretty boilerplate to me.
It is. It is. Trust us, it is.
That's fine.
So we have no other discussion amongst us, correct? All right. I'm ready for, to entertain a motion on the application.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
A motion to recommend approval with conditions of case number eight twenty-four, with the conditions as noted in the staff report.
Yeah, that's, that's efficient, cause the staff report's public.
Okay.
Yep. It's out there.
One second. I didn't know if he was finished.
I like to just fall off a cliff.
All right, Mr. Axon?
Yes.
Ms. Salter?
Yeah.
Mr. Geis?
Yes.
And Mr. Reeve?
I do wanna see the traffic study, but yes.
Would you?
Not as, not as a condition of approval.
Okay, all right. Okay, then the motion passes. Thank you very much, Commissioner.
So, you're welcome. And just so for the record, you know that the information will be forwarded to the trustees and they will then make a decision at their next regularly scheduled meeting, which is?
It will actually be the
Actually, the next meeting they'll schedule when
They will hear it, yes.
So they'll schedule when they'll hear it on the fourteenth, which is their next meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, the thirteenth, apologies.
I think the applicants are probably most interested in this, although Foster may want to know.
Maybe.
So, basically what will happen is on the thirteenth, when the trustees meet next, we will say, we have a zoning commission case that we need you to hear. They'll typically schedule it for their next scheduled meeting after that, which is gonna be the twenty-seventh, the fourth Monday. At that time, they'll have a hearing very similar to this, where we'll present the case packet. They'll call for any public comments, questions, or anything like that. You may provide additional information. So one thing I would suggest based on this is that if you have the results of that traffic study available at that time, that you forward them to me and I can include them as additional information in the case packet, okay? Any other questions from you, the applicant, about that process or anything? Okay. In the meantime, congratulations. We'll let you know certainly when the next hearing day has been set for the trustees. But in the meantime, you've got a recommendation from the zoning commission for approval to the trustees, okay?
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Same room, we just moved little nameplates. It's a lot of fun. Not the same person, though. So this is it for us, right? Unless we come back with a major modification of some sort, right?
Okay.
Right?
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Bye.
Yeah, thanks.
Be safe out there.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Foster, I am so sorry. I should say things like, hello, what's your name? I'm so backwards sometimes.
We literally just wore him in right before
I believe it, like
I only showed up five minutes.
Well, I love it. It's really great. So are you like a local yoke? You're, you're new. You're not a local yoke, boy.
I live here from California.
Wow. And you stayed? Must have a good job.
Stayed here, they, yeah, my boss said, come to Dayton and you can keep the California salary. Thank you, sir.
I'd hate to interrupt you again, but again, I just wanna stress, anytime you wanna talk about anything regarding Stonehill, I'll be happy to make myself available.
Appreciate it.
Doesn't have to be official.
Thank you, sir.
Bye.
Thank you, sir.
Take care.
He is, he's really nice. He'll take you phone calls. He'll talk to you anytime. Good guy, good guy.
We're still public.
Oh, yeah, we're still public. Hey, you know, he's helped build Beaver Creek Township, as it is.
Cause he owned the whole.
He owned the whole. So now we are ready for meeting minutes.
There is a set of minutes that was sent to you. It was completed earlier today.
I just realized there's no attachment.
Is that correct? Well, then, why don't we do it in October?
Why don't we table that for another time?
Yes, excellent. It's been that kind of day, guys.
That's all right. So, with that?
A motion to adjourn.
Foster. Second.
Oh, I'll second, sorry.
All right. Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, excellent.